Welcome, everyone. Michael K. A. G. P. Okay, good, thank you. Welcome. Today is Tuesday, April 11th, 2017. This is a special meeting of the City Council. We have a couple of things for the special meeting. We have advisory board interviews and we will discuss our draft advisory board work plans. First over order of business will be our advisory board interviews. For the record, all council members are present and we'll call the meeting to order. And at this time, I'll open it up for public comment and don't have speaker slips or anything, but I'll just look out at the audience if there's anybody for public comment at this time. Seeing none, thanks very much. I'll conclude public comment and bring us back to our advisory board interviews. So just to run through some process, we have our Citizens Oversight and Finance Committee that will go through the interviews first. We'll invite you all up. I know we have two mics here, but we'll arrange that, invite you up and just ask for a brief introduction. And then each council member will ask a question and if there's any follow-up questions, we'll conclude with that. And then we have a ballot which we'll submit to our city clerk and she'll announce the appointment. So with that, our Citizens Oversight Committee applicants, if you'd please come up, welcome. And you want to, John, you want to come up to the front table? I think so for Deborah, it's Deborah Adams. So Dana, just for the record and for the board, Ms. Adams wasn't able to attend, but we can, as council, allow her application and we can explain that process.
That's correct. Mrs. Adams had previously scheduled travel plans and she submitted a request to the council that they consider her application, although she was absent. And that is provided in the council policies and procedures that the council can make a motion if they choose to consider her application during the interview process.
Okay. And you know, just for the sake of process, if we'd like to make that motion at the very front end of the application process, I would accept that motion?
I'll move there.
So we have a motion and a second?
A second.
So a motion by Mr. Davis, a second by Ms. McPherson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you. So we can consider Ms. Adams and her application at this time. And then with that, I want to thank you all for coming back and great to see you all. So just lead off with Mr. McEwen, if you wouldn't mind doing a brief introduction for us and we'll welcome. Yeah, there should be, there's the green light. There you go. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Malcolm McEwen. I'm applying for this position because I would like to help you folks do the work you need to do and I hope I can bring my own unique perspective and perhaps channel that from other people who want to give me ideas on what they'd like to see and help spread your work. I used to be a civil engineer. I used to grow flowers. I live in town. I've been here about a year now, 20 years in the Estero Bay area. And that's about all I've got to say right now.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And Mr. Martin? Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's John Martin. I'm recently retired after 40 years in the workforce. First 17 years of those in the private sector, working for a large grocery chain, 23 years in the public sector, with the most recent eight years as general manager of a water district in Kern County. I am a certified public finance officer from the GFOA. In fact, the, my water district, the full eight years I was there, received the certificate for excellence in financial reporting from GFOA. My wife and I purchased a house here in Morro Bay back in 2011. We've been weekenders since then and we just became full-time in December. I have a, both a bachelor's and a master's degree in public administration and I'm just interested in seeing if I can use my skills to help the city out.
Thank you. Great introductions. Appreciate that. And I'll start off to the right and I kind of look to my right, I'll look for Ms. McPherson.
Okay, all right, I'll start off.
Question and come back.
All right. Thank you both for coming back. We appreciate it. Let me ask you both, what do you see as the major financial challenges facing, major financial challenge facing Morro Bay right now?
As I see it, I'm aware of the impending financial issues revolving around retirement funds and that, and also with all cities of this age and this size, your infrastructure's getting to the point where a lot of it needs to be replaced. And unfortunately, a lot of it's hidden in pipelines. People aren't aware of it and it's hard to make that case. So those are, those are kind of hidden things that are creeping up on you, I believe.
Well said. I think that the CalPERS obligation, the future increases to CalPERS that you already know about that are coming, that's going to be a big strain on the general fund. Of course, the other big one is the, the capital cost for the new wastewater treatment plant. That's going to be very pricey. Of course, you can levy rates to recover those costs, whereas in the general fund, it's more difficult to cover those types of retirement costs. I think those are probably the two biggest items.
John?
Gentlemen, thanks for coming out. My question is this, what do you, in your opinion, feel the public wants most from a Citizens Oversight Finance Committee?
Why don't you go first this time? Well, I think that the citizens want to have representation so that they can have some more assurance that the things the government is doing are transparent and above board. Of course, the city goes through a complete audit every year, which is required by law, but I think they have a citizens committee reviewing the budget, reviewing the audit report, the comprehensive financial statements with some degree of expertise, gives the citizens some comfort that things are being done right at the city.
Thanks. Yeah, I would say that given the amount of public comment and interest sometimes at these meetings, it must feel like you're up there operating in a vacuum and other times it feels like the room is too full of people angry at something or other. And so I suppose one function of a citizens advisory committee would be to enhance communication between you and the council and other people on whatever topic. In this case, the budget, which you know, is of interest to everybody, but it can be exceedingly boring to go through. And so I suppose finding a way to enhance that communication would be what citizens would like to see. And mostly, they just want to make sure their money's getting spent properly, I think, and that you don't go off on, well, you don't do like what Governor Brown did with the train that goes nowhere, is, that's my opinion on that one.
Thanks, Matt.
So I, we'll start on this end now. How do you see the function of the Citizens Finance Board as it relates to council? As you've looked into this board, do you think it's sufficient in terms of oversight and making commentary to the city council?
You know, I haven't done enough research to know if your existing board is, provides a sufficient oversight for you. It certainly provides another layer or another set of eyes to look at things and for that, I'm sure it provides some value. Whether it's sufficient or not, I couldn't really say.
Well, I think primarily you have to rely on your professional staff, your city manager and his staff for the vast majority of the information that you're going to need to make decisions. But I think that the citizens committee can bring kind of a fresh perspective, kind of an outside looking in type of perspective, might see some things that your professional management staff would not see and maybe fill in the gaps a little bit. But I think that our role is small compared to your professional staff.
I guess my question is going to sound just like a different version of all the other questions. What do you think is the most important role of the Finance Committee?
Well, I would say the purpose for which it was created, which was to look into the measure Q, expenditures, to ensure that they were done according to the ballot measure that was approved by the voters. And then second to that, to provide a public viewpoint on the budget and the annual financial report.
I would say the role that the advisory committee can have is sometimes do the, do the kind of the hard work or the not-so-fun work, like I notice on your proposed work plan, you're going to have the citizens advisory committee come up with a way to cut $200,000 from the budget. And that's, that's a good place to put it out at first, to let, to let them, you know, take the heat or whatever comes back on that. And also, I think there might be some room for the board to do some fun things, like I look at one of your, your goals and objectives here for the achieve economic and fiscal sustainability. One of the goals in there is to have take appropriate action, implementation of specific programs to increase off-season TOT-producing visitor nights. And those, that's kind of like, when I say fun things, come up with new programs, some new ideas. So that's kind of the role I see for the, sometimes you get the hard work and sometimes you get the fun stuff.
Okay. All right. Great. Thanks. Thanks again for coming out. So after, you know, great answers and comments and, so do you bring any goals, to personal goals and what you might see as being advisory board? And I'll start with you, Mr. McEwen.
Yeah, I, my personal goal is to learn more about the city. I am one of those concerned citizens that are relatively uninformed at this point. And so I feel it's, it's time for me to take some responsibility for my little piece of government and it's not a spectator sport, so I need to get involved somewhere and this seems like a good spot for me personally. And it's not civil engineering, which I've done before, and Mr. Nunley does a fine job on what I see doing on that particular project. And I used to work with Mike too and I like him, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't get in his way over there. So this, this seems like a good spot for me to fit. It would, it would mesh with some of my own personal goals for growth.
Great. Thanks.
Well, I don't have any access to Grind or anything like that, but I think that what I would like to see myself accomplish would be to help the committee to understand the city's finances. One of the questions that came up from the committee at their last meeting was, is there a place where we can get kind of a quick and dirty learning of governmental accounting? And I could assist the committee in that because I have a thorough understanding of governmental accounting. And so inasmuch as there may be some folks on the committee who don't have that background and need some assistance, I could provide that.
Great. Thanks. Are there any follow-up questions from council? Any follow-up comments from you all? None? Okay. Thanks. With that, we'll cast our ballot and hand it over to Dana.
Councilmember Davis has voted for Malcolm McEwen. Councilmember Makawetzky has voted for John Martin. Councilmember McPherson has voted for John Martin. Councilmember Heding has voted for John Martin. And Mayor Irons has voted for John Martin. So, Mr. Martin, you are appointed to fill a current vacancy on the Citizens Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Congratulations. And Mr. McEwen, thanks again for coming out and hope you pursue other openings that may come our way. All right. Thank you. And our next interviews will be our water reclamation facility, Citizens Advisory Board. And we have one applicant, Ms. Fullerton. If you'd please join us. Thank you. John? Welcome. Thanks. And there's a little button there and a green light that'll come on and, okay, good. And if you could just introduce yourself. Thank you. Relax. Everything's great. Is the, he's asking for the mic. Is there a green light when you push that? There you go. There you go. Thank you.
It was subtly green, not brilliantly.
Okay.
My name is Ann Fullerton and I'm a retired Morro Bay resident. My background is in communications, journalism, and in strategic communication. I worked for high-tech corporations and I worked on environmental issues. A lot of issues that, chemical issues, just a lot of, a range, a full range of environmental issues. After that, I went out on my own and created my own consultancy and had a kind of schizophrenic practice of working with clients on environmental issues and then working on high-tech startups. Some of my clients for, on the environmental side, were the Environmental Protection Agency. I worked on their green lights program and their Energy Star program. And I also worked for the, did consultancy work for the National Academy of Engineering. Again, they had an environmental component. One of the projects I worked on was on a publication for best practices for, best environmental practices for corporations. So I think that about does it. That's the scope. I also, one last thing is even, I'd say 10 to 15 years ago, water was being isolated as a very, very major issue that everyone, everywhere, was going to need to really take a look at. So that's part of why I was interested in working on this particular committee.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll start with questions as we did last time and I'll look to my left and see if Mr. Davis will start us off on questions and we'll just work from left to right.
Sure.
Okay. Well, welcome. Thank you for coming and for applying. What do you think is the mission of WRF CAC?
You know, that's a very good question because I feel like I came underprepared and that was one of my questions that I was going to turn around and ask you guys. For me, or the role I would see it as, is to isolate and identify what are the key water issues that we're facing and what are some of the solutions that it can come up with? Now, I think that's, let's put it this way, I think that's what the city needs to do and the citizens committee needs to review that and to see if it does fit with what the community is identifying also.
Matt?
So as you say, well, welcome first of all, but as you talk about the process that the WRF is going through and the WRF CAC as an oversight, citizens body. And so I don't know, I want to ask you a question about the various technologies that we're interested in using for this wastewater treatment facility. Are you familiar with those?
No, I am not. I have not read enough about them.
Got it. Okay. So I won't ask that question then.
Yeah.
But knowing that this has been an ongoing issue with Morro Bay in terms of what Mr. Davis is saying in terms of the role of WRF CAC.
Yes.
Do you think a citizens board is sufficient to explain these ideas to the larger body? Or would you, what are some of your suggestions that you would think, working with a citizens board and then reaching out to the public?
Given my background in communications, I think how you communicate is going to be so critical. It needs to be very, very clean and people need to understand it. And a citizens committee, in my mind, would have part of that responsibility. It would have to be, whatever communication was developed would also obviously have to be in tandem with what the city council is talking about. But I think it needs to be very, very clear and simple to all citizens, exactly what you are talking about in terms of the technology and why the costs are what they are going to be. Because unless people understand that, it's, from my experience, it turns into a lot of misinformation. And that's the last thing in the world, again, from my experience, that anybody wants.
Thanks, John.
Good afternoon. Good to meet you. So my question is, given your background, the WRF project, as you probably have seen, has, at least for a lot of community members, a rather shocking price tag. And given your understanding of the project and what you followed to date, could you just give me a high-level structure of how you would suggest we go about communicating to the community the validity of that if you saw value in it?
There are multiple layers to that question for me. Because when you say on a high level, do you mean overall, how, or, see, I go into strategy mode. I go into, what's your message? What's your big message? And then how are you going to support that message?
So for me, as a councilperson from your committee, if you were selected, you could assist in helping us to communicate.
To identify what the message is.
The issues. And so what would be your key points in structuring a message that specifically revolved around concerns about cost at the community level and a value perception at the council level that, and merging the two together and communicating to the public so that there's an understanding of, you know, the rationale for such costs, if there is indeed one?
I think that you have to prove value, the value of the project and therefore that value is going to have a cost. Also, it is what it is. Water is a major issue. It is, it has been an issue and it is going to be an issue. How we handle it now will affect what happens down the line. And here are the options and this is what it will buy you. This is what you will get for it. I think that people, I think, want to know what they're getting for their dollar. And if you can cleanly and clearly explain to them and show you what, and show them what benefit they're getting, they may not be happy with a dollar amount, but I think they will accept it because it benefits them in some way. So I gather my answer to you in a real quick way is, you have to show the benefits.
Marlese?
Yes. Well, thank you for coming and welcome. I'm going to give you a really easy one. What motivated you to apply for the WRF CAC?
I think it's that I haven't had my fingers dirty in a good communications project for a while. And this has a lot of different factors. I was used to taking, both when I worked for a corporation, technical ideas and reducing them to simple terms so that everybody could understand it. And a lot of that was done through applications, showing people what a technology could do rather than trying to explain the technology to them. And I think that our environmental issues are very similar. I think everybody pretty much wants a healthy, safe, clean environment, but they don't understand what it takes to get there, not only from a personal role, but then on the next level, your community role, and then as you keep on going up. And each one has a role, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Ann. So in one of your previous comments, you talked about asking what the mission was, you know, like you're getting up to speed on some of this. So there's a lot to learn with this project and coming in. So I guess my question to you, as in your professional background, coming into something which you're asking to come into as an advisory board member to WRF CAC, as a professional, how did you get up to speed and how would you, what are your thought processes and how you would get up to speed on this project to date? If you can just talk about that.
You know, that one's, it's just research and reading a lot and talking to key people who are involved.
Okay.
You know, that's sort of the, I would always go, when a project was presented to me or a topic area, there were usually people who were experts in that area and then there was material.
And there's plenty of material for us to supply.
Yeah, that's what I mean. It's, you know, it's, it's a lot of reading and then, and then after that reading, figuring out what I don't know and then asking the experts so I know or get some understanding of it.
I'd say it's probably an interesting opportunity in having kind of the communication background in which you're, and basically you're getting up to speed on some of the project in of itself and then having the component of communication. Because quite frankly, that's what the, we're experiencing at the city level. We've had some people that have been involved all along and then some people that have, you know, just started to get proactive in it. And so you could be a pretty good nexus in how, how that matches up. Yeah. So thanks. With that, unless there are any follow-up questions from my left or to the right and any follow-up comments or anything?
No.
Okay. Then we'll just cast our vote and hand it over to Dana.
You know, they usually send you away for this part.
Look at your competition.
All right.
This one is pretty straightforward. I looked at all five ballots and there is unanimous support to appoint Ms. Fullerton to the vacancy on the WRF CAC.
Okay. Thank you.
And there is no set term for that committee. It's a project duration committee.
I could be on for life, huh?
Okay.
Thank you.
Ann, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, folks. Well, I know in our agenda, it says approximate times and we have times for this, but given, getting through this and we do have our Harvard Advisory Board Chair here, we can move on to that item.
I think maybe the best thing to do is have some introductory remarks, maybe by the city manager regarding what the issue is, but actually not have the discussion with the board until the 3:40.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you. Yep? Okay. All right. Welcome, Dave.
From the slow city manager. That's with a W, slow.
All right, welcome, Dave.
From the slow city manager. That's with a W, slow. Okay, Mayor, City Council, um, so I guess we can't formally start with your discussion till, uh, on, on each work plan for a few minutes, so that'll give us a few minutes to talk through the process here. And it's good, because I was going to rush through this so that we didn't, I didn't use much of your time, but we can, uh, we can walk through it instead. Um, so the, uh, the purpose of this meeting is for the council to review and to discuss the draft advisory board work plans that were developed by your advisory boards and their staff representatives. The next step will be following this meeting, um, the staff will discuss the council input that you give further with their, with the advisory boards, um, before the work plans come back to you for final discussion and approval. So here's sort of the what we are doing. So this is a slightly different process from last year. Last year was the first time we did this, and this is just a little bit different. Um, last year, we, we had a joint council advisory board meeting with each advisory board, um, and that was pretty tight and hard to do in about 30 to 40 minutes and to have comments from everybody. Um, and so what we determined to do this year was, uh, was to give the council the opportunity to look at each advisory board work plan with the staff representative here, and we invited the chairman of each advisory board or their designated representatives. So you could engage back and forth with the chairman, with the staff, and understand better, but not have, uh, have to try to organize seven or eight joint meetings in a short period. So the, the intent of this entire process is to ensure that the work, the work that your advisory boards are doing during the year is consistent with what your goals and objectives are. Um, and to, uh, so that your advisory, so that the advisory boards are, uh, are singing off the music that, uh, that you have composed, um, and that we're all, boy, mixing metaphors horribly here, we're all rowing the same direction. Um, the, uh, so that's, that's sort of the purpose of this. So today is an initial discussion. Um, the staff leads and advisory boards have had discussion on these work plans, developing them, um, looking at a number of things, looking at the goals and objectives as they have evolved and developed over the last couple of months, looking at last year's work, looking at their areas of expertise and determining what they, what items they think that the city should be working on and considering. Um, and so these things come to you now for initial discussion to, uh, to, so that you can ask questions, you can identify areas of concern, um, that, that maybe, why is the advisory board working on this specific area? Or areas that you may want to put on their work, on their, on their plate, so to speak. That is a third metaphor. Um, and after this, in, in May, um, the, uh, so during the month of May, the staff and the boards will take the input that you give in their, uh, in their advisory board meetings and, uh, and refine their work plan. And then those work plans will come to you in June for your final review. Um, they'll actually come twice. We'll have them as a business item, a discussion item, um, so that you can look at them, talk about it, and, um, direct staff any changes that you want to have. And then they'll come back to you likely on consent at the end of June for final approval before we start the, uh, the year in July. This is a, uh, a, sort of a diagram of that process that I just described. And so, uh, so we're working through this process so that each advisory board starts the, uh, the, the work year, the fiscal year, on the 1st of July with a council-approved work plan. Um, and then there's also, uh, the little roundabout there on the right-hand side, um, there is a, uh, a mechanism in place for new items to be recommended by the advisory boards during the year. Uh, that generally happens one of two ways. Either the advisory board might communicate to their staff representative, hey, we really think we should be working on this, and staff and I will discuss it and, uh, and bring that to you. Or, um, or the advisory board might write a letter directly to the city council saying, we want you to add this to our plate for the year. Uh, so, meeting process, we've just, uh, completed the city manager intro. Um, we'll have, uh, have the first, um, group come up here and, uh, to the table in a moment, and that is, um, the harbor advisory board, Mr. Endersby, and I believe Mr. Reisner's here, the chair. Um, and then they'll be available for you to have a discussion with and then you to provide direction.
Great, Dave, thanks.
I can't draw this out any longer.
Okay. We doing okay on time, Mr. City Attorney?
I think we're waiting until 3:40.
Till 3:40?
3:40.
Okay. Um, do you want to take a short, serious thing?
You can sing.
Was, was gonna, I guess, I guess for the sake of that, we could take a brief recess till 3:40, because technically we start at 3:40, or we can have some general comments about the advisory boards. Um, is there a request to, to take a short recess, five-minute recess, come back at 3:40? All right. Okay, you're okay?
I, I was going to bring up something, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time, uh, but it concerns whether or not we might want to talk about, uh, providing some kind of training for all of the advisory board, uh, boards. Just-
And so, general advisory board discussions in this kind of scope? Okay, just want to make sure that we're meeting with our, the intent of our noticed meeting, so.
Right, right.
Yeah, so we got, we got the nod from our city attorney.
Okay. Well, I, just having participated on, uh, two advisory boards previously, uh, it occurred to me that it would be very helpful, especially for new advisory board members, if they had a clear understanding of what the, their role is and what the relationship is to council and, um, what the expectations are, how to run a meeting, for example, uh, the idea about following the same kind of meeting procedure that we do with council, uh, how you seek public input and, and, and those sorts of things, which, um, I know would have been helpful for me when I first got on an advisory board. And I know there's variation across the, the advisory boards in terms of how meetings are conducted. So I throw it out for discussion and, uh, nothing more.
Okay, great. Um, any, any comments to that?
I, I really think it's a great idea. Um, I, I think it helps the individuals start fresh and have a good understanding of what the body's about and how to operate within the context. I do see some struggling with some of the committees, possibly because of minor lack of understanding of, um, some of the, um, Brown Act rules and other types of interactions. So I, I think it's a great idea.
Any, any further comments, Matt?
No, it's a, it is a good idea. A lot of times, folks, um, misinterpret advisory board roles versus perhaps, um, elected roles. And so in terms of breaking down some of the minutia and the actions of boards, I, I think it's a great idea.
I agree.
Okay. Um, thanks for bringing that up, Marlese. I know we've got our advisory board policies that, um, will be coming back to council to discuss, and we'll have a, a chance to, you know, add comments, refine processes that we might want to address. Um, also would be an opportunity to have our advisory boards look at that. I would say probably if, if we go into training, I think one of the things I think of as a former advisory board member myself is orientation. So I know, um, having a, um, orientation packet that, you know, might be a good one for all of us to, to, that is kind of a standard that we might be able to use for all our advisory boards, um, could be pretty helpful in, in establishing some of those ground rules, so. Yes, Dana?
I just wanted to comment that that is something that we began developing the last two appointment processes, that we do have a manual, and I do meet with them and go through the council policies and procedures, advisory board, um, bylaws, Brown Act, and sing, it's brand new. So many of the current advisory board members may not have received that, but we are in the process of developing it.
Okay. So maybe a big, great, great opportunity to revisit that with our policies advisory and, and stuff like that. When we bring that back, we can look at that and see if there's, um, added-
Sure.
-content that would be helpful.
See, I didn't know that, but thank you.
Great, all right, good, thanks. Um, and with that, we're looking good. We got the thumbs up, we got the 3:40 time, we want to adhere to all that. And welcome, Ron and Eric, excited to get started on this. And, um, Eric, you want to, uh, lead off on, uh, the work program as presented, and then we can, uh, talk through that with, um, council and, uh, Mr. Reisner?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Arns and council. So the work plan process, um, as you know, with the goals were work in progress through January, February. I didn't get my goals to the harbor advisory board in March because we didn't have an adopted set yet, so I got it to them in April, and it was still a little fluid, and I think we're looking at finishing it up tonight, hopefully. Um, so I brought the goals as of, I think, the March 28th meeting to the harbor advisory board at the April meeting, um, last week, and that is what the comments you have in front of you. Um, we obviously picked and chose the, really only the applicable goals that applied to the harbor and waterfront-ish areas. We did branch out a little bit beyond that when it comes to the old wastewater treatment plant site and power plant site because they are kind of beach and waterfront-ish, so we did make some comment and look at those. Um, do you want me, Mayor Arns, to go through one by one, or how would you like to go through this?
Um, well, that, just the overview is great. Um, I also did, um, want to just, um, so maybe back up a little bit and just, first of all, say thanks, Ron, for coming tonight and, and on behalf of your board. Um, hopefully this is, um, you know, in the past, I know we did the whole, um, advisory board and, you know, for the sake of getting through everything and the, um, the, um, the number of meetings and stuff, hopefully this is, serves well for the advisory board in having this discussion. So, you know, if you have any opening remarks you want to make, um, you know, maybe you want to start there, I just thought I'd offer that as well.
I was advised of council's intent relative to how to handle the joint meetings this time around, uh, with the harbor advisory board. I so advised the body, and during the last Thursday evening's harbor advisory board meeting, it was with that in mind that the board discussion took place. Board members were encouraged. Prior to that, I had polled the board as to prioritizing some of the items that we were following, both, uh, present and declared future agenda items. And, uh, so I had the benefit of that information prior to Thursday evening's meeting, and every board member was given an opportunity, I think an ample opportunity on Thursday evening to, uh, through the goals and objectives, work plan process and, and in general, to express their opinions. They were clear that I needed their individual and collective input prior to coming here today. So I have my board hat on today-
Great.
-as opposed to my Ron hat or any other hat.
Great.
And, um, uh, I provided, and I understand the posting issues that you have, but I provided the, the city clerk this morning with a, a list of, uh, an amalgamated list of, of what the board feels are its priorities, all of which were reflected in the draft goals and objectives work plan.
Okay, great. So with, with that, um, yeah, let's just, let's click through, through the list as we see it, and, you know, we can, let's interact as we go through each item, and we can provide feedback, and then any, any feedback we have, we can get through that. And, um, and Ron, also, what you've submitted is prioritized, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so prioritized as it, as it reflects, um, the Harvard Advisory Board's priorities and-
And, and in fact, I suspect that, that two or more anywhere on the list may have the same relative priority position.
Okay. All right, great. Okay, Eric?
So I'm thinking maybe I'll, I'll go through, and then if Ron wants to provide any other commentary as far as board consensus, I will add that in addition to the meeting Thursday, there's probably some general sense baked in here on some longstanding things like aquarium and a few other things that have been ongoing efforts where the harbor advisory board has commented over the months for the past eight to 12 months. So those things kind of get baked in here as well. Um, so goal one, economic and fiscal sustainability. B was the first item that, um, was really applicable to the harbor advisory board, which hopefully still matches the current B. Opportuism relationships that result in revitalization of the power plant, treatment plant, site, elementary school, Morro Bay Aquarium lease site. Um, aquarium's obviously the first one on there. Harbor advisory board and staff continue to provide input and guidance to the Central Coast Aquarium and community development as they develop their proposal to submit to the city, assuming they're still on track, which I believe they are. So that's one work plan item. Second work plan item is, um, review and recommendations to planning commission and city council on that proposal once it gets accepted, so HAB and staff, um, partake in that decision-making process. So those are the two aquarium items that we foresee in the future.
Okay.
Ron, any?
Any comments from council? None to the left? Matt? To my right? No, looking good.
Okay. So Ron, nudge me if, or kick me or whatever. Uh, Morro Bay Power Plant, again, not in the enterprise zone, but obviously very harbor relevant. Kind of the same thing, provide staff and HAB review on any development proposals that get submitted out of that power plant property if anything comes forward in the next year or so here. And that's the only one we've got on power plant.
Okay. I'm just looking for comments, so if we see any comments, we'll just, we'll just open up. So keep going, thank you.
And then wastewater treatment site, kind of the same thing, if, if things come forward, HAB and staff review of, of whatever the proposals are in terms of how they might impact the beach or harbor or other operations that are sort of oceanic.
Okay. All looking good, thanks.
Okay. Number five, eelgrass, that's a continuation of a, an other item on our current HAB work plan list. Um, we have an ad hoc committee looking at possible, um, research and implementation, establishment of a Morro Bay specific eelgrass mitigation policy as opposed to the current statewide mitigation policy, which isn't the most user-friendly document in the world in terms of facilitating and allowing development and redevelopment and even sometimes maintenance and repair occur on our waterfront. Um, there's a similar effort that occurred in Newport Beach that we'd potentially like to model, so continue our efforts with that ad hoc committee's research into eelgrass mitigation alternatives, um, including engagement with the Morro Bay National Icebreak Program. Lexi Bell is sitting on that ad hoc committee. Um, again, it's on the current list, and we recommend continuing on with it. And then, um, number six-
Eric, do you mind if I ask a question of Ron about that one?
Sure.
Um, Ron, because on the, um, the work plan elements, it's, eelgrass is on there, but it was brought up at the meeting the other night, um, specifically the one you put on your, um, um, note you gave to us about, um, eelgrass mitigation plans. By putting it on your piece of paper here that you gave to us, do you feel, did board not, harbor not feel it was sufficient under the work plan elements?
Not at all. It was the ultimate goal. I was just expressing the board's ultimate goal relative to the eelgrass-
Okay.
-which it perceives to be facilitating appropriate development within the city under whatever your guidelines are, uh, under, as Eric referred to, under a confusing and difficult-to-apply state eelgrass policy. And there is precedent for local, uh, for local can, I started to use the word control, and I don't think that's correct, uh, for local entities to, uh, submit and obtain approval for a local eelgrass mitigation plan that suits their particular intentions or desires relative to development and their particular circumstances.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question on that, so I'm, I'm assuming that, um, the Coastal Commission has some examples that they've certified, um, and, and with that, having a, I would say, certified eelgrass mitigation plan, that that would, um, improve, um, you know, any kind of development or protections, really, of the eelgrass. And so I, you know, is, is that what we've got out of that ad hoc committee, Ron, as well?
Yeah, that's, the general direction is to seek a, a policy and mitigation plan more specific to Morro Bay that removes some of the impediments, yet continues with the environmental protection, that would have to get Coastal Commission approval, probably Army Corps of Engineers, EPA, several regulatory, fish and game, fish and wildlife, several regulatory bodies' approval, much like they did in Newport Beach, which is what's occurred down there. It just, it's more tailored towards, towards that town to accommodate its, its needs and uses while still doing the environmental protections.
And Newport Beach has had success in-
Correct.
-approving their document and, um, obtaining, you know, kind of managing that.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, regulatory approval.
Morro Bay Harbor Advisory Board is, uh, trying to develop a pathway.
Thank you, thanks. John?
Yeah. Um, have you guys worked or, um, in the past with the advisory committee at Cal Poly or any of the oceanography folks there? Are they working- Are they working with you? Or is there, is that body still intact that's been looking at this as one of the issues among other issues in the bay?
Yes, that's Slow Sea, the San Luis Obispo. I won't try and guess at the acronym. I don't, can't remember at the moment. But yes, by Dean Went to Cal Poly. Yes, we, in fact, I just had a meeting there a couple of weeks ago. Jennifer O'Leary, who's the Sea Grant doctorate there, working with Cal Poly, she's focusing mainly on eelgrass and is working with the National Estuary Program and Dean Went's program. And so, I'm tied into that and I'm looping them into the committee as well, once we get a little further down the line. But yeah, that would be the intent and the NEP as well.
Great, thanks.
Yep. And so, the work plan elements, again, like Ron said, it's kind of develop and identify a path forward, a potential regulatory path forward. Follow on if it continues on, consider hiring consultancy to help us, guide us through it. There's several firms that helped Newport Beach through it. So, that's a potential, which would require funding, obviously. And then development of actual policy and to seek federal and state regulatory approval for it, if, if it looks like that's a viable alternative.
I do have, yeah, I have a question for you also. Exactly how, what is the nature of the relationship with the National Estuary Program? I know you said that Lexi Bell is on your committee, but don't they have a responsibility also for eelgrass mitigation? And haven't they been working independently with you? I just want to know the nature of the relationship.
Yes, the Natural Estuary Program is a non-regulatory entity. They do education outreach and restoration and purchase land and do all sorts of things to help out bay waters. We, as a department, work very closely with them. They currently do a fair amount of eelgrass mitigation projects on their own funded through various sources that they've done over probably the last decade. And with Slow Sea and Jennifer O'Leary are doing a fair amount of research. We would continue on, really ideally in an ideal world, if we were to come up with an alternative mitigation-type policy, one version would be an in-lu type process where if you're a developer on the waterfront and you're wanting to do something, but you've got eelgrass, instead of doing all the surveying and mitigation and, and owning eelgrass essentially for five years, you pay an in-lu fee that would go towards programs that the NEP is establishing to help the overall eelgrass rather than try and save a one-square-meter patch that just doesn't make sense.
And then just one more, did you want to also answer, Ron?
I'm waiting for you to answer.
Oh, okay. Well, this is just a follow-up question, I guess. So, how would you see that moving forward? And I guess I'm concerned because my understanding is that they haven't been very successful with eelgrass mitigation. And I'm just wondering if you're taking that into account in coming up with a policy.
Yes, I'm sure we would. Eelgrass, as, as I stated, Jennifer O'Leary and Sea Grant is really focusing on it. And they, and they, and the NEP really don't know where the historic decline in eelgrass over the last five to seven years has come from. But all reports are now that it's on a pretty terrific rebound and it may be freshwater-related and needed some rain, which we finally got. So, they're all trying to sort that out. But it would definitely take into those sorts of factors in terms of, you know, mitigation. If, if everything's doing bad, try and mitigate and put the best, you know, put your money where it's going to have the most effect.
Okay, thank you.
So, as Eric said, the NEP is a non-regulatory entity. So, the best way perhaps I might suggest to look at it is, is it does science. That's what it does. So, what the Harbor Advisory Board needs during this goals and objectives review process on the counsel's part is, is this an appropriate objective for us, given that we have now shared with you are thinking that the ultimate goal would be a city-specific, more of a specific mitigation plan that would enhance whatever development you decide or that you, that might be appropriate on the harbor. So, that's what we're looking for. I mean, are, are we, are we going down an energy path that is appropriate for you? Or are we not going down an energy path that's appropriate for you?
Okay. Thanks. Trying to keep, trying to keep things going.
Yeah. And then the last one on that list, don't lose track of those Maritime Museum efforts. Complete the license agreement MOU update, which is currently underway. License agreements in the Maritime Museum's lap right now, waiting for them to bring back the final draft and hopefully be done with that. And then look at updating the MOU and assuming they're still moving forward on their plans in the sort of the edges of the Triangle parking lot.
And final MOU, come back to counsel.
Yeah, continue with that synergy. Okay? Any questions on that?
Good.
Okay, item D, the next one, which is evaluate opportunities for new expanded revenue sources, including limited to. That's pretty much what we considered an open page. Had a number of things already on our list, added a couple more last week. First one being participate in research, bring to council for consideration, establishment of paid parking in and around the Embarcadero, which is one of the, I think, one of the key ones on the list there for counsel's consideration. Next one is consider moving for-profit events and activities from a public area use permit process where there's no revenue generation other than a little bit of fee recovery, basic permit processing fee recovery, to a fee-based license agreement process, meaning there's a few entities out there that get permits to do events on our beach and they're doing it for profit and they're in the enterprise zone. They really should be paying a portion of their revenues in either a base rent or some sort of percent rent to the harbor fund to conduct those businesses on our property.
Okay.
What are some examples of those events, Eric?
The one that always comes to mind with me is a company called Beach Butler's. And they do mainly weddings, but they've done a couple of corporate sort of retreats where they bring folks down the beach and have a little contained fires, I shouldn't say bonfires, Steve's not around, but contained fires and bring down food and some lighting. And they'll have a little, you know, 20, 30, 50-person retreat down on the beach. So, those sorts of things that they're doing for profit should have an element where we recover some of the benefit out of that as well.
Okay.
Okay. Next one, number three, research and bring to council concessionaire contracts for food trucks or other basic beach needs at the Rock parking lot during special events. Harbor Advisory Board wasn't quite ready to take the leap to, you know, all summertime or weekend-type times, but really wanted to look at special events. I know we've, as a council and as a city, have talked about that in the past as well. So, they want to research and explore that. Next one, number four.
Sorry, so other locations like Coleman Beach and things like that?
Yeah, Coleman, maybe Tylands.
Okay, all right, good. All right. Good.
Next one, number four, research and bring to council licenser, or base, with license agreements with base or percent rents for other businesses' operations operating on the bay that aren't currently operating out of a lease site. The clearest example there is some of our underwater hole cleaners. They're out there with a business, conducting business and they're generally just kind of what I call freelancing off of public space or wherever they keep their boats if they're operating off of a boat. And they're, again, just like the special use permits, should be some degree of city revenue recovery out of that.
Okay. And that's just, that's research and kind of what, to see what that looks like?
Yeah, and then eventually bring it back to the council because we'd have to develop policy and guidelines on that.
Okay, great.
Number five, research...
That we developing policy, we don't perceive applies to the Harbor Advisory Board unless we're directed by counsel to suggest some kind of a policy.
So, and thanks, because as I'm, I'm looking at that research, what that's going to look like. That's, that's where we're, and then that'll come back to counsel. And as we work on policy, that would, you know, that might come back to you and say, absolutely, we want our Harbor Department to, Harbor Advisory Board to, to work on policy.
The present Harbor Advisory Board is crystal clear that it is not a policymaking body.
Okay. Your policymaking assistant, though.
No, no, we understand that we, that we're charged to facilitate, hence the research and suggestions and even recommendations, capital R.
Thanks. Thanks, Ron. Thank you.
Okay, number five, and this one fits in with one of the listed items in item D, which looks like a new add from the last one, is if I remember correctly. Bring to council for consideration slip pier and dock fees that either accommodate, incorporate or meter recovery for the amounts we spend on water and electricity. Currently, we, we do have a fee recovery on electricity at the piers, but nowhere else. And water, nowhere do we have other than our showers, our pay showers. So, looking at some sort of a metering or fee recovery to recover those costs.
Okay. All right, good.
All right. See any hands raising up there on that one? Number six, bring to council consideration fee-based RV or boat slash trailer parking in the Triangle parking lot until some permanent use is allocated for that. Good short-term, medium-term, depending on what happens in that lot for getting some revenue generation out of that. I know as part of the boatyard process, one of the things that was identified early on is get trailer boat parking in there first because it's low, low development cost and pretty good return to get revenues generated. So, recommend looking into that.
Okay. Any comments then? Okay.
Also in the Triangle lot, establish a concert venue, maybe not such a direct revenue generator, but something that might bring more people into town and create some kind of synergy for a little alternative things to do in town.
Any comments?
Yeah, is there room for that in the Triangle? If we put in a hall out and Maritime Museum?
Well, this is again, kind of in, like the last one, until a permanent use is allocated to that. So, yeah, it would be use some of the land while it's available. And then if we do a boatyard or something else in there, then obviously that may have to go find a new home.
Be a great name for a venue, the Boat Yard.
So, this would be more of a, we need to kind of, this is kind of explore what a venue would look like?
Yeah.
I mean, this, this is, I mean, this says establish one, like that's what we're going to do. I guess, I imagine we're going to explore what all that looks like is, and I, as I'm asking, I see Ron kind of shaking his head too and looking for counsel to, to understand what their understandings are.
Maybe research and bring to council.
Yeah. Yep, got it. Yeah. And I'd be, obviously working with, with Ikani and his folks and Jennifer and all those folks that do that for a living.
Cool. Thank you.
And this may be a very temporary concert venue, like the movies at The Rock are. And Jen's planning a fall jazz series in Giovanni's parking lot. So, something along those lines.
Yeah. Okay. And thanks for introducing the next one, Dave. Drive-in movie nights, potentially look at more drive-in movie nights at The Rock. Those seem hugely popular. Again, not giant revenue generators, but good events for the city.
So, so again, more, so is there quantity, is it like monthly or?
I think, again, it's sort of research and look into what might be supportable, both by staff and by the community.
Yeah. Can I just have a quick question? Do we charge for that?
We were charging for that, yes.
Well, just to be clear, that, that event was designated, has been for the last two years, a designated fundraiser for the Friends of the Harbor Department. But that doesn't, but we're expanding the idea beyond that particular dedicated purpose. And you bet you'd charge for it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification.
Thanks.
Number nine, research and bring to council for consideration, possible incentive for leaseholders to obtain more years on their lease in exchange for higher base or percent rents. It's kind of falls into the lease policy world as well. More of a staff item than a HAB item, but looking at that as a possible incentive.
And that incentive, that can be very broad. We don't even know what that, you guys are going to, tasked with looking at what that might look like.
Yes, look at other harbors, other Tylands trusts, see what other sorts of tools they use out there.
Whether it's interest in, hey, we're interested in enhancing some public benefits or extending the harbor walk, even though we're not improving our own particular lease site, there, that could be one of the incentives as well.
Sure.
Okay.
I think infinite possibility presently.
Okay, thanks.
You say products or services that are lacking or needed in the area, do you have any idea what, what is lacking or needed?
So, that's the next one down and great segue. I think somewhat that's going to be up to the business people to determine, although you think they would do that if that was something they identified. But also, as we're trying to move towards maybe a different economic future with trying to get higher revenues, look at higher revenue-producing type restaurant or retail or other establishments, see if there's anything out there to incentivize our leaseholders to do that and take a, maybe not a quantum leap forward, but another leap forward into the, slightly into the unknown to try and attract more types of businesses to generate more revenue. Okay, any more on that one?
Yeah.
Okay, number 11, seeking established more robust harbor grant-seeking process beyond what we currently do now with our existing staff. That I could see partnering, like for instance, we've got the Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary Foundation. There's a person who works in that foundation that's trying to leverage Prop 1 grant funding to help us with some environmental best management practices, storm drain stuff, water quality stuff. So, seeking other partners like that can help out and help us leverage funds, not necessarily us focusing more time on grants specifically, but seeking if there's other opportunities out there.
Okay.
Okay. And number 12, research and bring back to council and working with state parks and consideration of advising the State Park Marina Operating Agreement to allow the city to take over direct operations rather than through the concessionaire in order to maximize revenue collection and keep on pushing to try and see if we can get that marina renovated and dredged. One of the impetuses or impati, I'm not quite sure which word, for that has been fair amount of turnover in state parks over the last year since we discussed this, oh, a year, 18 months ago, maybe. The district superintendent's changed. All the folks that we'd been dealing with up in Sacramento have either moved on or retired. So, it's kind of a little bit of a start over from ground zero to get back with parks and re-engage with them and see what sort of thing they may be willing to do in that operating agreement, where they want to go with it. In addition to looking at the, as you know, the restaurant, you know, we looked at that a year or so ago and seeing where the future on that, you know, where they showed no interest in giving up the restaurant. So, re-engaging them and see where they're at on it today. Okay, number 13 on the list, last one under this item. Research full modern GIS slash GPS mapping of the city's two mooring fields and see if there's a way we can better utilize distribution of space in order to see if we can get some more moorings in there, which are direct revenue generators.
Okay.
Okay. All right. And number E, let's see if E has stayed the same. Yeah, cost reductions, $400,000 in cost reductions. Two things the Harbor Advisory Board had on that. One was please counsel clarify how this objective will affect the Harbor Department and other enterprise funds, since the enterprise funds are not part of the $400,000 cost reduction identified. That's all in the general fund number, what's, what are we being asked as the Harbor Fund to do? And the one work plan item on there was recommending the council adopt an objective under the goal to pursue a management partner's recommendation number three, which was do an OMB compliant cost allocation study, since the last one was 2009, 2010. Do the updated study, not just to ensure that proper funds are being utilized from the enterprise funds, but also ensure the general fund is, is collecting its full due as well. With that, that cost allocation plan being that old, the Harbor Advisory Board believes it's time for an update on that.
And the city having reorganized several times since then.
I can, I can see something like that coming to counsel, you know, relatively soon. That's a fairly, that could be a fairly big ticket budget item.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so that's something we need to have a grasp on and how we, you know, want to look at that.
Okay. Any other on that? Okay, goal three, city infrastructure and public spaces. Number B, or letter B, review of circulation and parking management plans in downtown waterfront. Again, kind of like the wastewater treatment plant site and, and power plant site, have review and provide input on proposed management plans and options as they relate to the harbor, our waterfront. Okay, no other comments on that?
Mr. Mayor and counsel, with your indulgence, relative to the cost allocation, one possibility perhaps is for counsel to direct staff to do a department-by-department gut check on the existing assumptions that have been in place for however many years now. Just do a gut check. I mean, some, each department head spends whatever, 15 minutes, 30 minutes, whatever it is, and does a gut check. I mean, they should all know whether the assumptions are working for them on a department-by-department basis in a general sense or not. So, if, if it ain't broken, fine. If it ain't working, then, then counsel would have an opportunity, an advised opportunity or informed opportunity to pursue the, the direction that you commented on.
Okay, great, thanks.
So, anything on the parking management and options?
Okay. Anybody up here? No? Okay.
Okay, item D, completely approve RFQ process for marine service facility, which is underway. RFQ is out there and due July 14th. First item under that would be the, the Boat Yard Ad hoc Committee and the HAB review the responses. If we get any from the... if we get any from the RFQ and evaluate and make recommendations in terms of next steps, and that's going to be hugely defined on what sort of responses, if any, we get from that RFQ, so it could go in any one of several very diametrically opposed directions, with the ultimate, if no RFQ feasibility, nobody comes out of the RFQ process, then reconsider whether we're going to go out and do financial feasibility for it. So that'll be, there are two work plan items under that.
Okay, any comments?
It's continuation of what we've been doing. Item E, inventory, evaluating, refresh existing volunteer programs of all sorts of different types. Two work programs they identified in that are identify facilities in need of opportunities for that type of participation, whether it's Mor Bay and Bloom or Mor Bay Beautiful type things, or Mutt Mitt type things, or more capital project sort of things, or just volunteer help, so identify what facilities or opportunities are in need, and then identify groups or organizations that might be willing to help or even solicit those types of organizations, see if they're willing to jump in and take the lead on some of those.
Anything, any comments?
Okay, go four. Significant review and update GPLCP. First element on that was HAB, through the Working Waterfront Committee, and again, the HAB, working with staff and the consultants, Michael Baker and others, and the GPAC that the HAB provides input relative to working waterfront type elements, and that somehow gets incorporated into the GPLCP process. And element number two on that is sort of an add-on, that we do some Measure D clarification and ensure that some sort of Measure D guidance or clarification is hopefully put into the GPLCP.
Yeah, I just had some comments, Eric and I spoke earlier today on this, and I know there's been questions, Ron, about, you know, how I'm doing this, and appreciate the work the subcommittee's done on the working waterfront, so just to, I think this is a point for conversation here, I think there's a request for clarity on the working waterfront and how we want to pursue integrating that into the general plan, updated general plan and LCP. My thoughts, based on our conversation, my conversation with Eric today is, from a standpoint of, we have another agenda item tonight on perhaps approving and more funding and for end meetings to get through updating our general plan and LCP, right? So we're, as a council, we're going to be looking at what we want to do with that. We have a timeline that we need to get through that, so I'm kind of sensitive in how much we add to all that. And my thoughts on the working waterfront, which is great, is basically, we just do, it's a general plan, so we don't need the actual working document, but an overlying working waterfront mission statement. And with that and the Measure D language, you know, that could be worked out as the overriding language that could be inserted into our general plan and LCP, and working out all the details would fall underneath that. So I think that's, I think you were looking for some feedback on that, and I just wanted to, you know, I think that's a point of clarification from my view, and I just want to understand where the rest of council is and some feedback from you as well, Ron, because I know this has been, this is something near and dear to many of us, and this is our opportunity to have that discussion. In light of that, I'm sensitive to time, and I'm also looking at Harbor Advisory Board's is probably the largest objectives list that we have for tonight, so I just want to be able to wrap this up as well, too. So if there's any feedback comments on those comments, Ron?
The Harbor Advisory Board as a body, and certainly that designated ad hoc committee has gone about as far as it feels appropriate for it to go, given council direction, the initial council direction, and we're looking for the council to say, you, thank you for what you've done so far, and do something else with your time, or we need you to do this now to wrap this up, wrap this item up. So we're looking for closure, basically, is what we're looking for.
And?
And then the Measure D thing to us is pretty straightforward, there are, we've identified long since that there are three apparent ambiguities in the present language, and we just, we'd love to assist the city in any way we can in resolving those ambiguities. We're not talking about reinventing Measure D.
I understand. So to have closure on the working waterfront, is that something that we need as a, you know, complete document, presentation from, you know, where you all are at on that?
No, we've been providing periodic reports, Mr. Mayor, so the approach that you outlined in your opening comments, I mean, that's fine, I mean, if you want assistance, if the council wants assistance with general guidelines relative to the GPLCP update, fine. We certainly put in plenty of head time that we could contribute to that if we're so directed to do so.
Yeah.
We just, we just want to know where we're going with that one.
Okay, any comments from council on that, Matt?
So with that, in terms of those two big items, big-ticket items that affect more than just the harbor, but so much more of the city, perhaps, as Ron alludes to, we could perhaps agendize these items for a future meeting, and take your point, Jamie, in terms of the general plan, not necessarily force-feeding it into the GPLCP plan, but closing off, take their recommendations and agendize an item where we can discuss it, and then at another council meeting, discuss how to best use it, either put it into the GPLCP or keep it on the side.
Yeah, we can definitely agendize it and have that discussion.
And then that way, that would free up harbor.
Yeah, and it'll give them closure on that?
Yep.
Okay?
Yeah. I think that's a great idea, Matt. I highly support that.
So we'll look for you to do, agendize that tonight. Okay, cool. All right, good, thanks.
Okay, any more on that, those two items? Okay, last but not least, item D under that goal, bring to council consideration, different code enforcement issues out there, hedges, boats, RV, trailer parking, city streets and neighborhood, again, kind of like power plant and wastewater treatment plant site, provide both a venue and take public input and make HAB recommendations for council consideration, specific mainly to boats, obviously, and trailer parking, not necessarily only on the waterfront, because there's not a lot of it going down there, but boats are pretty germane to the bay, so feel the HAB could provide a venue for that and give some recommendations and input on that.
Okay. Definitely support that, and just want to ensure that, you know, it's an open venue for, you know, because we, as you know, the code enforcement part of, whether it's boat storage or RV storage, we have a wide view of how that should be, and we want to make sure that we're, we have an open door for people to come in and have those comments and work through those.
That's exactly the point, Mr. Mayor. We're just, we're suggesting to you that if the council determines that we're an appropriate venue for any or all of our part of it, if you will, we'd be happy to agendize it and open the door.
And valuable, thanks. Yeah, thanks.
That's all I have.
Okay, I'll just, one thing, and we can close on this, because we're pushing our time limit, of all, these are the most objectives, so I would say that we need to, as council has whittled down our goals and objectives, I think we need to do the same and see if this is doable within a year's time. Seems like there's a lot on the plate, so I would suggest that we take a look at making this workable within a year's time, because I'm not sure how we're going to get through all that personally, and just trying to be sensitive to prioritizing and getting through all of these. And so I would look for some feedback, both from the Harbor Advisory Board, and then when this comes back for us to approve, we'd be able to look at that and have some feedback on what is achievable within a year's time with all these objectives. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes total sense. My initial feedback is, we took a fair amount of time in kind of parsing these out into, you know, section by section, so that kind of adds to the list, making it look long, where you could probably take all the aquarium things and say it in one sentence, and all the, all the boatyard things and say it in one sentence.
Yeah.
What really adds to the list is some of these economic revenue generating, you know, 12 or 13 of those, some of which we're already working on, but those really add to the list, so I would say it's not quite as long as it looks, but I appreciate that comment, and we'll definitely look at it in that light.
Yeah, put it in context where it not only appears manageable, it is manageable.
Yeah, I don't want to take off more than I can chew either.
Great. Any comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I really appreciate the fact that you organized this by the city's goals. That was so helpful to show how you're working toward and contributing toward the city's goals. I had the same concern as Mayor Irons in terms of, is this really doable? But I appreciate having the prioritization, and I think that's going to be very important, so we can get a sense of how the Harbor Advisory Board sees its priorities, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, my comment would be, again, a great, great job as usual with a very comprehensive plan. Putting some timelines to completion on steps for these would be helpful for me. I get the broad concept of a lot of these, but I don't know if you have action items and dates, that really helps keep people on track and helps to meet milestones and develop milestones, so if that could be incorporated, that'd be great.
Yeah.
The Harvard director has been very good, very effective at helping us think about it in terms of work plan quarters for FY, in this case, '17, '18. So does a quarterly approach work for the council?
It works for me, and just knowing what action steps you want to memorialize to achieve for that quarter is what really I'm looking for, so, just a metric to monitor.
Yeah, no, I totally understand, I totally appreciate that. If you want to get into my head, my thinking on it was, April, we're running a little ahead of the adoption of the goal, so I didn't want to spend too much time on something that might change, they didn't change a lot from the last couple of meetings, which is good, but also because until we adopted the goals and objectives, I didn't want to commit time to it and spend a bunch of time with the Harbor Advisory Board on the short time we had to even get this on the agenda for last week, so I knew full well that the quarter planning of these things were going to come next.
Yeah, totally appreciated, and all I'm saying is that sometimes, not you, but we have a tendency as managers to write these and then go, oh my gosh, it's third quarter, I should start this and get something done, whereas if you have identified the steps up front, you're checking yourself and there's accountabilities built in.
Right.
Okay. Great, and to keep things moving, I'm going to say thank you very much, and I appreciate the Harbor's, Harbor Advisory Board's work, and look forward to seeing a more refined list, because it's a pretty big, heavily tasked, so thanks very much, Ron, appreciate it.
We just want you folks working for us, that's all.
Okay.
So thanks, and so the HAB appreciates the council's support, in particular, we appreciate having an active liaison in the person of Councilman McCaweski. That's a big help.
Great. And with that, we'll conclude our Harbor Advisory Board, and welcome our Public Works Advisory Board Chair and staff member. Thanks, Ron, thanks, Eric.
Afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thanks.
Rob Leivik, Public Works Director. I'm here to discuss the, with the help of Rick Deschler, our chair, the work plan for the 2017, 2018 fiscal year for the Public Works Advisory Board. We broke our work plan into three sections, basically goal-related work plan items, routine public works items, and then board-requested items. So going through the goal-related items, as is already on the schedule, the board wants to stay involved in the rate-setting process for the new WRF project, provide input on city water supply options through the One Water process. We had one of the board members that assisted us in the consultant selection process already, and you'll see at not this council meeting, but the next council meeting, a recommendation to award that contract. Provide input on a street improvement tax measure for the November 2018 ballot, should that move forward. Provide input on parking management plan options throughout the city, the waterfront, and downtown area. To provide input to the Planning Commission and the City Council on the general plan, local coastal plan update as it relates to public works issues such as traffic, water, and wastewater. Really, the water and wastewater will be accomplished through the One Water planning Provide input to the council and Planning Commission on code enforcement outreach on existing codes related to issues within the public right-of-way, mainly related to parking, hedges, fences, with, within the, that have encroached in the public right-of-way.
And so I'm just going to jump in on questions on that one, considering the Harbor Advisory Board's request to have, establish a venue for the code enforcement, particular boats and RV parking, could we wrap that venue in with our Public Works Advisory Board as well, to kind of ensure that we have, we're looking at existing codes-related issues within public rights of ways, would that be appropriate from the Public Works Advisory Board's standpoint to have another, have a venue that would assist us in that particular code enforcement effort?
I think so. I think so.
Okay. Without being, not trying to be redundant, or, you know, but I'm trying to make sure there's, you know, allowable, you know, appropriate venues and stuff like that.
Right, right.
Okay, thanks. Any comments from council on that? None? Okay. Any comments that aren't necessarily in agreement with that?
Sorry.
Okay.
No, I'm assuming, Mr. Mayor, I'm assuming that you would like them to coordinate, basically, and make sure that they're going down the same path and maybe holding a joint public forum.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
I'm just going to make a couple notes on that item. This one will probably be towards the end of the fiscal year as we move through the EIR process, but to take a look at the existing Tascadero Road site where our existing wastewater treatment plant is, and assist with the planning of that, mainly as it relates to other public works functions, because there will be some, still some public works facilities there, the D-SAL plant will probably, at least in the near term, remain there, along with, we're likely to have a rather large lift station in that vicinity to pump the wastewater to the new WRF site. Some of the routine public works.
I think we have one question.
Okay.
Councilmember Davis?
Yeah, I was going to suggest the same approach with this as with the code enforcement, because the Harbor Advisory Board wanted to take a look also at the WWTB site.
You know, we've had great success on the WRF project, holding these open houses, and maybe that would be a good place to have, as the boards are looking at the issues with, that affect the various, their various responsibilities, to provide that input at that public workshop.
Rob, if I can piggyback on that question in terms of this future use for the wastewater treatment plant site, and part of the process of the WRF going forward, starting this now, being forward-thinking, if the next plant is going to be operational 2021, and so that's, and how often each year would you be doing these future use conversations?
I don't see it as an annual process, I see it more as a, as we move through the environmental review process to provide input into that future planning, or through the general plan LCP process, not to create a input, an annual input-type process for this. It's really more of a one-time event rather than an ongoing process. Not to say that as we move into the details, there might not, in a future year, might be a particular work item that needs to go to Public Works Advisory Board for their input on, but I'm saying, in the initial planning stage, I really see that as really a one-time event for the board to weigh in on that. event for the Board to weigh in on that. Our, some of our routine items that we would like to continue to work on is the annual Street Summit and review the proposed street improvement plans.
Can I interrupt you then?
Sure.
I don't recall that this was actually an annual event in the past. I know we've had several. I think it's a good idea to have an annual event when we actually do invite the public in and show them, you know, what kind of improvements we're making during the year. But if we don't change the process to paving more often, I'm not sure if it makes sense to do it on the off-years when we're not paving. So you might want to just think about that. The other thing I wanted to say about this, and maybe this is a good time to bring it up, is that I'm going to be asking the council to agendize a discussion of Senate Bill One and the implications for any additional revenues that we might be getting from that. And I think that some of those, some of it kicks in, actually, in this coming fiscal year, so it would be nice to know and plan and incorporate that into any planning for streets improvements, so.
Any other comments on that? Just real quickly on the Street Summit, one of the comments we had in the past was tying the annual Street Summit to when we're doing budgeting. And we talked about that because so many times we'd get comments, and it's nice to be able to have our committee understand the overall budgeting needs of the city tied in with that. And it might be a great opportunity, since we are doing our street paving now, we've been getting various feedback on street, on paving, so, you know, probably be great, you know, I think, really, you know, to maybe do that sooner rather than later.
And I just want to take this opportunity to point out that perhaps we didn't do such a, because of the extended length of time of this street rehabilitation program, perhaps we weren't the best communicators with what was going on regarding the street work. I know that it was always listed on the website, but I was told that not everybody uses our website to get information from.
Yeah, yeah, all right. Thanks, thanks, Rob.
Thank you. This kind of relates to, I'm going to skip down to the, skip over the maintenance of city facilities, or we could just go to that one, just to provide input on, you know, our trash and our facility maintenance upkeep and provide, have our maintenance staff provide a report and show, you know, accomplishments and where perhaps resources are needed and where focus is needed. But one thing that we were looking to do is add a review of the capital improvement program, which feeds into the budget process, to the Public Works Advisory Board, and to tie that to the annual Street Summit, really, because the Street Summit is just part of the capital improvement program, to move those two as, together as a, either a single item or at the same meeting.
Great suggestion. And so is that coordinated with our, so, facilities, our parks, city parks as well?
It would be all capital improvements that Public Works is responsible for, so park facilities, streets.
I just think that we have a Rec and Park Committee Advisory Board, but it's mostly on that capital improvement subject, so it might be something we need to coordinate that with.
Yes.
Okay.
I have one, I'm just, one question. You say, review on an annual basis the level of maintenance provided to city facilities. I'm wondering if we might not need an update more often than annually. Case, I mean, I'm assuming that if there are problems, you would come to us, if there's not enough budget allocated for it.
So one thing we do with the Public Works Advisory Board is each month, we have a Director's Report where each of the division managers are given an opportunity to talk about what they're doing each month, and we typically have a line item for maintenance in there. So that's how we handle on a routine basis, is we don't talk about how many trash cans we emptied or, you know, how many mop buckets we refilled, but we do talk about issues. So I think that's our opportunity to do it on a more regular basis and then have an annual report to talk about the results of that past year. If that, if that works for council, it seems to work for the Boards receiving that Director's Report.
I'm open for that.
And perhaps we can just expand the facilities maintenance item.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that if the level isn't adequate during the year, the council hears about it.
I think you would hear about it.
And not just from the citizens.
All right, thanks.
The other thing that is required by code is that the Public Works Advisory Board take a look at the annual water report, and we have that coming up this, this May, that'll be coming to them, our conservation levels, and then our allocation for future water availability. That'll be coming to both Public Works Advisory Board and to Planning Commission, and then follow that on to City Council to set those conservation levels and water allocation for the oncoming, upcoming year.
And we've got that updated, right?
Yes, we got that, the ordinance updated, and we, after 20 years of having that on the books, I don't think we're going to violate or uncode anymore. Some of the items that we, the items that were discussed at the last Public Works Advisory Board as items to add to the work plan, the Board had three work areas where they wanted to take a look at. One was to look at the rock parking lot and the traffic control at the entrance, and looking at a better way to control movement of vehicles in and out of the rock parking lot. If you've ever been down there on a really busy weekend, it's kind of
Free-for-all.
Like a Mel Gibson movie, with vehicles going everywhere out there. So we were looking at maybe more of a formal entrance and exit to the rock parking lot, but keeping it in natural, its natural state, not doing a bunch of paving out there, but to better formalize that entrance and exit. One that our Chair would like to explore would be to, I think it's reactivate, really, it's something that occurred in the past, but to have a garbage and recycling education program to, you know, help our citizens understand what can be thrown away and what should be recycled, and to add that to our work program.
I was going to just talk about that a little bit and see what the rest of the council's thoughts are on this, but, and I brought it up once before, but, so, we live on the coast, and it's, both we have the seagulls and we have the wind, and we have, oftentimes, we have open garbage containers. So if you're talking about that, my comments would be to kind of review what our policies are for public trash cans. If, you know, we're thoughtful about our environment, we probably have closures on them, and if we don't, maybe we need to have some guidance that, both for the city and how our city operates, public trash cans, and perhaps even, you know, businesses that have, you know, trash cans outside. So basically, just to control trash, public trash containers out in the open so we can, you know, make sure the wind and our friendly seagulls aren't disposing of our trash outside of the container. Does that make sense?
Yes, and we're going to get a little bit of help from one of our regulatory agencies on that issue coming up with our next stormwater permit. There's a trash amendment that basically states that no trash out of trash cans, because it gets washed into the waterways, and that'll be a major change to the stormwater permit.
Okay.
But this item, you were thinking about a more educational campaign for the general public on what they individually can recycle.
I think that's what we envisioned on this item, yeah. To bring an occasional item to the Board and talk about, either with help from our friends at IWMA or Morro Bay Garbage to present educational materials on that.
Perhaps in the water bills or?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I know our Chair talked about, there used to be a sticker that used to be on top of the recycling containers that may or may not be, still be used, about telling what can be recycled and what can't be recycled. So perhaps reactivating that.
And it's changed now that we are throwing our food waste in with the green waste.
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
And then one of our members wanted to really nail down the schedule for the proposed street improvement tax measure and get started on that right-of-way and start talking about that almost immediately. So that's why it's envisioned for Quarter One and to really provide that education early on in the process.
And unless there's any other comments, I think we're synchronizing that with some other priorities that we have, and we're looking for 2018. Are there any other comments for that, John?
Yeah, only that if we, if we do agree to talk about the impact of Senate Bill One passing, that may impact somewhat, I'm not sure how much, our proposed tax measure for fiscal year 18, but.
What we can do is modify that measure to have it
Right, we just need to.
Coincide with the adopted council's schedule on that street funding measure.
Okay, great. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So on that one, just want to make sure that the Board isn't out in front of the council on this, and just may want to have that discussion now or be prepared to give the staff some guidance so that, starting on the first of July, the P-WAB isn't having discuss, that's Quarter One, isn't having discussions that you haven't determined that you necessarily want to have.
Yeah, and I think my general initial lead-in comment was, we have some other coordinated obligations, both with our WRF, and we were, I think we'd had this discussion once before. We're focusing mostly in 2000, for the 2018. So I think we want to stick to that, and the schedule that would be required to meet that November date would reflect whatever the start, whether it's the first quarter of 2018, whatever that would take. I think that would be the direction. That would be my comments, and I'm just looking for support from how we want to do that from the rest of council.
Yes, and in addition to that, there's a slow cog discussion going on about their possible initiatives, so I think that's all coordinated for 2018.
Yeah.
So we may just want to make that Q3.
So what I've
Which would be January of 18.
What I've changed the language on this to be Schedule Proposed Street Improvement Tax Measure Discussion to coincide with council-adopted schedule.
Great, thanks.
And that's the proposed Public Works Advisory Board work plan. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Deschler if he has any comments to make.
We didn't add very many items, mainly because there's a lot on the plate already for this next year, so that's why our list is so small. We see that there's quite a bit of work there to be done.
I viewed it very, very well, actually. Any other? Thanks, Rick. I appreciate that.
Also, going back earlier when you were doing your candidate interview and you were talking about handbook, something that's also, should be included in that is microphone training.
Is what?
Microphone training. Most people aren't familiar with how these microphones work, you know, it'll be far away, or they'll be talking to the side. So just a little bit, you know, if you're going to be training people on how to be on boards, that would be helpful. Media training.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
It occurs to me that in the past, we have had an annual address of unmet bicycle and pedestrian needs that has worked through P-WAB, and this year, it's got installed somewhere in the process, and I don't know exactly where, but I wonder if it would be worthwhile to add that to your Q3 work plan so that it doesn't get lost next year.
Red, thanks for bringing that up, and I think we can also add, basically, there are many slow cog initiatives that need to be coordinated through our Public Works Advisory Board that come up, and obviously, the bike pedestrian is one of those, but there's probably, I think we just need to have, make sure that we're coordinating our Public Works Advisory Board with any moving issues with our slow cog board too, because that, that information's valuable as it comes to the slow cog board. So, you know, I've dovetailed both of those comments. Thanks. Thanks, Red. Okay.
Thanks, I had some, just some additional items for consideration. I'm not sure if they're worthy, but I'll throw them out. One was, I think you began to talk about IWMA, and I'm not sure how you coordinate with IWMA, or, I know that Red is now the liaison for that, but there's lots of good discussion that goes on, having been a former member of that Board, that is applicable to what you're doing, and I don't know where there is linkage, but hopefully, there is linkage.
Well, there is some linkage. For instance, I was at the senior center, which had a presentation by Integrated Waste Management Board last month, which was excellent, but maybe about 25 people were there. This type of education, I get questions all the time from neighbors, you know, is this recyclable, is this trash? And I'll go up and down the streets, and I see in recycle bins, a mop, you know, with this handle sticking out, all kinds of things are there. And about a year, so a couple of years ago, I went on a tour of the landfill and recycling center with Integrated Waste Management Board. So there's a tremendous amount of information that needs to be presented to the public. We used to get a packet, basically telling you what you can and can't do, you know, once a year mailed to the different households, and that stopped. That was back in the 90s when there was competition between the garbage company and other recyclers. But now that it's sort of just a monopoly, everything is sort of dependent upon the Integrated Waste Management Board to get out there and get the word out. The garbage company is sort of hands-off now, so I think they should be more involved. Thank you.
Yeah, and I guess my point is that there, our county is world-renowned for a lot of innovation, and there's a lot of materials available through IWMA that you just might be able to, you know, use, and so I'm just thinking something to do with linking and making sure you take advantage of those economies of scale and using that. My second point was, whoops, there's a comment on the Harvard Advisory Board about assisting the volunteer organizations in coordinating, I think, for P-WAB. You know, we have a bathroom group that's about to start up, and I don't know if it's appropriate to add to your goals, but assisting the fostering of volunteerism to improve public-related facilities, and so I would add that. The second, or the third was bird waste, and, you know, I don't know how or where we address it or how it might fit, but I hear the complaint a lot, a lot over in the Bayshore area, along the corridor of Morro Bay Inn, or in at Morro Bay, I should say, and then, of course, along the Embarcadero. Bird waste is potentially virulent, and it carries nasty bacteria as well. So I don't know what we're looking at in terms of cleanup or appropriate cleanup for bird waste or innovative programs for that, but I just want to throw that out for consideration on the part of your Board. And the last thing that I had was the issue of having action steps and metrics and timelines built in for accountability. I'll say that to everybody, but, and I appreciate the length of, this is a big agenda, so sorry to add to those things, but I think you're doing a great job in doing this, so.
Any comments from the council, seeing to my left, my right? Great comments, I'd support those, and Great comments, I'd support those, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. I know we're trying to move through things, I know we might be a little bit behind schedule, but next up is our planning commission, so we have Dr. Teft and Scott Graham, our two-point people for our planning commission, welcome, come on up, and we'll get through this guy. Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Bob. I know we're looking at about 10 till, we've got our T-Bid and citizen oversight and wrecking park, and so, and trying to get that, through that in the next hour and 10 minutes will be challenging, but we'll do our best. Thanks.
Okay. The planning commission work program is centered mostly on items related to the city's goals and objectives, with the exception of one item, and that's sort of at the end, so we'll get to that then. So, starting off in the beginning, goal one is to achieve economic sustainability, specifically Objective C3, which is evaluate and implement opportunities for increased TOT. First one is to facilitate revitalization and redevelopment activities that will result in planning approval of a 3% increase in hotel rooms in the city. Planning commission reviews all those types of applications. We have one, they just recently reviewed, that'll be coming to council here in a meeting or two, and then they would be seeing that on precise plan review when it came back. We have a couple of other ones that are sort of teed up, that'll be coming down the road, so sort of to make, you know, they're aware of that, that those items are coming, and we have another one that's over on North Main that they'll probably be taking a look at here within the timeframe of the next fiscal year. Goal two is to complete the WRF and the One Water Program, in that is item B that deals with the WRF EIR. It's likely that the planning commission would be looking at the EIR for that project, given that they're our land use body, reviews land use decisions. Goal three is to improve infrastructure in public spaces. Objective B under that is bring to council for information, consideration, and possible implementation of a review of circulation and parking management plans and options in the downtown and waterfront districts. We've had some initial conversations with the planning commission about that. These items would naturally sort of funnel through them. We have some other initiatives that I'm working with Cal Poly on right now to support the draft downtown and waterfront strategic plan, specifically with Eugene Judd's class. Looking forward to working with them on coming up with some circulation options for PEDs and bikes, and they're even going to help us out with a little bit of the wayfinding things, and like our planning commission to review all that, and maybe even have a presentation with the planning commission on that. I think that might be kind of fun for the planning commission. Item C under that is bring to council for decision and proposals that result in public and private partnerships for redevelopment of the city-owned market plaza. Council has provided, you know, authorization to go out with an RFQ for that, and we haven't released it yet, but I do anticipate that within the next couple of weeks. Any, you know, responses that we get back from that, and if we end up choosing someone to redevelop that site, then obviously, the planning commission would be involved from a land use standpoint in reviewing those applications, there would probably be preliminary reviews that are handled by the planning commission to make sure we're going down the right road and those types of things. Anything for that big, I would sort of anticipate that being, that being the process that we would follow. Goal four is review and update significant city land use plans. We need to sort of get through and complete the general plan and LCP. Looks small there, it's one little line, it's a lot of work, and in the next one below that is B, and that's the, you know, complete the zoning code update, a comprehensive update that the council authorized, again, looks like a small line, but it's not a small item. We're starting those things, I mean, right now as far as policy development, and so the planning commission's going to become much more involved from this point moving forward. In fact, you have an item on your, on the agenda this evening to discuss new timelines for the general plan update and potentially some need to add some meetings so we can do appropriate amount of review within the timelines that are provided by our grant funding, which is funding half of that effort.
Can I interrupt at this point? I hate to put Dr. Teft on the spot, but since he actually serves on both committees, the G-PAC and the planning commission, and perhaps he's had an opportunity to look at the alternatives for how we complete that plan and the appropriate amount of oversight by both committees, do you have an opinion about the best way to go at this point? Do we need more meetings for G-PAC? Do we need an equal number for planning?
Wow. So my lead-in was, we have an hour and 10 minutes.
Well, I wish I had thought to give you a call just to find out, I wouldn't have had to ask you in public, but you're here.
Yeah, Marleth, I honestly think that, I honestly think that the, both the G-PAC and the planning commission are capable of taking a certain amount of initiative on their own, that we, that if we can provide opportunities for those two groups to sort of take the reins, that we don't necessarily have to be led by the consultants at every step of the way, that we could, we can produce some independent work on our own, which then bring back to the consultants and coordinate it into the plan. And we have been doing that, I mean, let me speak for G-PAC, because they've been mostly involved with it, but we have been doing that. What we now, mostly in terms of written material, we've done, there's probably a stack that tall of written submissions from G-PAC. And what we will now need to do is somehow get that all organized and bring it back to the consultants and say, how are you fitting this in?
To that end, they're going to be getting the next G-PAC meeting, a bunch of that material back with all of the edits and track change format in the thousand-plus-page document that is the baseline assessment. Should be fun for them to review. I guess the baseline assessment will be the following meeting, it'll be the CVRA, Community Vulnerability Assessment, so. Other items under the review and update of significant land use plans. Item C is ensure affordable housing and vacation rental challenges are addressed in the general plan and LCP update process. We've had ongoing conversations about this at the planning commission level, they're, you know, they're interested, and I think probably waiting to see policy and to have their input, you know, into that process, into the, throughout the zoning code probably to, you know, to help facilitate that moving forward. So I think that's something that's often on their mind in conversations that regularly sort of pop up, sort of organically, out of the review process they have for applications and projects that go before them. Bring to council for consideration, so this is Objective D, consideration the results of code enforcement outreach on existing codes, related defenses, hedges, boats, RVs. The previous two bodies that were before you were also interested in those things as it relates to their specific public rights of way, things down in the harbor, boats. We do have a good amount of information on the backside of that, we did go out with a survey on that, we had 1,500 to 1,600 responses on it, and we are due back to take that before the planning commission, and then with some recommendations coming forward to the city council on that, and so, and then whatever that might look like as far as potential amendments to our codes and wrapping that into the zoning code update likely, and potentially the general plan, but more likely the zoning code update. Item E, bring to council for adoption a rewrite of the secondary unit ordinance that we updated in FY16, based on recent changes to state law. So, yeah, we made those changes and sent it to Coastal, the certification, and I think we've talked to the council before about this, and state law changes sort of made it moot, and so now we have to pull that back and roll those changes back through the update process. Nice thing is, we are updating the general plan and LCP and zoning code now, so we'll be rolling it into that process that we're already in the middle of, so that's at least opportune, I suppose. And then item F is begin community outreach and council discussion on future use of the 26-acre Atascadero Road site for the wastewater treatment plant, so what might be going there in the future. We've already talked about it a little bit as far as land use goes in the general plan and LCP update, so that discussion's already started and will be ongoing. We had, I mentioned in the beginning of my presentation, that there is one item that is not goal-related, and the planning commission has expressed a desire to dive into the, and review the residential design guidelines. I think that's, there's an interest on the part of the planning commission to not just have a one-size-fits-all design guideline document, but instead to look at the various residential neighborhoods that we have and maybe tailor them specifically to those neighborhoods, and we're going to be identifying specific neighborhoods anyway as part of the zoning code update, so it seemed appropriate. And does, it is not directly part of the general plan LCP update, but it is a related item, I think. And we're probably going to have references in our zoning code that we have, an outside document that is, for design guidelines, so people know, so they, it's not a surprise when it gets brought up, which it sometimes is now, so. I don't know, Dr. Teft, do you have anything to add to this? Items, comments?
Yeah, I think part of the impetus to review the residential design guidelines is also, it relates to the upcoming zoning code. In other words, what issues are there that are currently addressed in the guidelines that really might migrate into the zoning code in terms of bulk size, scale, neighborhood compatibility, that sort of thing. In terms of housing affordability, I think it would be very useful if the planning commission could put together perhaps a concept of some general approaches and bring those to the council. There's a wide variety of things that can be done for affordable housing, some more aggressive, some less aggressive, and before we start getting into specifics, it might be useful to get council feedback on, gee, how, you know, how far do you want to go with this kind of thing, before we start doing very specific stuff. And then, in terms of code, the code enforcement is, as Scott mentioned, we've done a lot on that already. We've got 1,300 or some odd responses from, I mean, almost probably 30% of the residences in the city responded to this questionnaire. I guess the question that I would have is context, kind of what, because there are a lot, I mean, let's, let's put it out there, there are a lot of codes in the city that are currently not being enforced. So is the count, is it the intent of the council then to go beyond this very specific issue? Does this, is this sort of part of an initiative to be more enforcing of our city codes in a lot of areas? I mean, parking, traffic, safety, I mean, a number of areas. So kind of what are we looking at here? Is this a step or is this an end in terms of dealing with these particular codes?
Okay, so I'll have, we can lead off with comments and responses, and I'll just start off with some comments to the list that we have. Item B, where it talks about parking management plans, just coming back from the CalCog conference for the slow cog board, NAVs probably is something to just at least be thinking about, neighborhood electric vehicles in that, so, you know, I know there's most, there's a lot more to do on that, but I just throw that out there. And then on E for goal four, I'd like to discuss and bring some incentive options for secondary, the secondary units, have that in the discussion. And then also on goal four F, has discussed with all our other advisory boards, the wastewater treatment plant at Atascadero Road, you know, it seems obvious we want to coordinate with all our other boards, we've had comments on all that. And then as far as I had on my notes as a, an add was update housing legislation for planning commission. We've got, just coming back from the CalCog conference in Monterey, predominantly transportation, there's a lot, interestingly, there was a lot of housing legislation that's going to be moving through, so wanted to have that on. One of the work items as far as reviewing the housing legislation as it's moving through the state, and we need to be able to adapt to that, and it might mean that we have to do another secondary unit ordinance update in addition, but, I mean, it makes sense to be looking at that, there's a lot of interesting things out there. And then I would just make some final comments on, Dr. Teft, your comments about housing affordability, you might want to elaborate a little bit more, so you were looking for some sort of feedback and guidance from council on housing affordability?
Well, I, yeah, I think it would, it might be useful, it might be a time-saving thing if the planning commission were to put together sort of, here's six or seven general approaches to providing more affordable housing within the city, which, you know, rather than going into all the details on each one of them and then sort of, which of these would the council accept, which would the council approve of, how would they prioritize them?
Yeah. I think based on some of the other input we had, it makes sense to work through that and have that come to council, and we can kind of discuss that, just as, I think, what was the last, the other item, we were talking about doing the same thing, and we'd be able to prioritize that as well. I think that would be something I'd be interested in, because it's something that, it's not going away, and had some interesting conversations with that with Scott today. Yeah. Any other comments?
Just to respond to your code enforcement, more or less, question?
Yeah.
You know, my sense is that, you know, you know, I'd like to see either a recommendation to keep it, or if there's this huge need or desire on the part of the community not to, to propose some changes in the ordinances, because I think if the ordinances exist, to turn our heads sideways and just ignore it, we just can't continue to do that, and so whatever you think we need to look at with regard to proper code enforcement to actually enforce the codes, change them, adapt them, and/or use what's there would be appropriate.
So likely what we would be bringing back, based on the input that we've gotten so far from our citizens, is a measured approach to doing more proactive code enforcement. It's what we were starting to do when we hit the pause button on this, and so we need to pick it back up and have the conversation.
And one more, sorry, one more comment on that, at one of your, Dr. Teft, when you're talking about that, and how we're going with our ordinances and whether we, how we enforce those, I was thinking to myself, one bite at a time. It's a living document, as we know, and there's always a constant need to update those, but yeah, I would agree with Mr. Heding on that. Matt? No? Red, anything? Are we good?
Just add action steps and metrics. Sorry.
All right, good, and with that, I think we can conclude this. Thanks for being expeditious on this, we'll get to the next one, thank you. Yeah, thanks, thanks to the board, and then we can move on to our T-Bid board. Thanks, you guys. Hi, Jen, hi, Taylor.
So it's spring vacation, so our chairman and our vice chair are both on vacation with their families, and Taylor Newton was kind enough to come sit with me, so thank you.
Right on.
We'll be pretty quick, I think.
Okay, good.
Our goals are pretty simple.
Good.
So on this sheet, the first one is just the current review and annual goals development, which, same thing that we're doing this year, and it's gone very well for us, we take it, or I take it in front of the advisory board first and do a half-year goal review in December, and then based on their input, I bring it, or kind of bring it to city council for your review as well. The next one is the annual budget, and the annual budget really ties with the first one of the goals. Remember, this year we came in and we talked about purchasing the database, and that was part, those two kind of went together, same idea, so that's in there again, and it's the same thing, I'll take it to the T-Bid and get their approval or their input on what they would like to see changed, and this year we were doing really good, we were at 48% at half-year, so we were slightly under 50%, which I was thrilled by, and then from there it goes to city council for adjustments or changes. The third one, the marketing, public relations, and sales plans, again, this is the same thing that we're doing actually right now. The marketing plan from last year was already in existence, so we're doing quite a bit of changes that we'll bring to you to show you how we're going to adjust the plan for this next year. I think you'll be really happy with how it's formulating out, and we'll bring that this next month, and then I'll come to you for, for your approval on it as well. And then the last one, which is why Taylor is here, is the intention of adding vacation rentals and RV parks into the bid. And this was something that we talked about initially earlier this year, and we did not have a full board at the time, we only had about four and a half board members, and we thought it'd be best to just table it until we had not only a full board, but also tourism inside city as a department instead of separate, give us a full year under our belt and prove that, you know, we're doing a good job, and bring it back to you for your input or changes or options.
Great.
Yeah.
Any comments as we go? We're waiting, I'm waiting for comments as we go. All right, good. Good.
So if I can, or Taylor, are you going to talk about that one?
I, I mean, I could talk about it, but I think that we all know what we're talking about. We've been talking about it for a long time.
So it'd be, be good for the, this item will generate some interest amongst the RV park community especially. That community was very vocal against the 1% county TMD. And so, before, as Jen noted, the, the T-Bid Board was actually quite interested in addressing this issue right now, for the past three months and the next month, as the new T-Bid authorization for this year went into effect. And we had some great conversations and, and determined not to do that. So, with your concurrence and leaving this on here, what, what that means is that the city is going to start a conversation that will start with the T-Bid and end up in front of you likely late this fall or early next year, that would consider forcing the vacation rentals and RV parks into the T-Bid assessment. I don't have any professional objection to that at all. The, I'm just, I'm not, I'm stating that so you don't hear from me in my matter-of-fact tone that I'm concerned about that. I just want to ensure that if the council gives this direction, and you still have, you're not going to approve this work plan until June, you still have time to process this. But if you approve this, this work plan with this on it, that that discussion is going to start. It's going to start with the T-Bid, it is going to involve RV parks and vacation rentals, and it will come to you at some point during the process for, likely, we would bring it to you for direction, and then it would come as a definitive action about this time next year with the reauthorization of what could be a new bid, a newly organized bid.
I say bring it on. Number one. And, and number two, are we looking at potentially evaluating additional vacation rentals that might be operating that aren't licensed? As work plan issue, and, because I'm just hearing that there's a lot of stuff going on out there with regard to those, and, and so I bring it up here. I don't know where else to fit it.
And?
We will, we will likely bring to you in the budget process, a proposal to, so we're, we're in contact with a, with a company that, a tech-based company that essentially will send us a list every month based on them surfing our web, a list every month of the addresses of anybody that is operating a vacation rental in Morro Bay. And we'll bring that to you during the budget process to ask if you want us, I think it was eight grand or something like that, to do that, and staff needs to do a little bit of assessment on the ROI on that. But, but bring that, we'll, in answer, we'll bring that to you in the budget process for your consideration then. I would, that, that would be more a, a deputy city manager, finance director compliance question than a tourism manager issue.
Sounds good. So just the, just one more comment on this, so in having this on the work plan, are we still looking for the, the board, the T-Bid Board to agree and vote on whether or not they want to do this? Or, and, or if it's, if it's the will of this board here, we're saying, go ahead and do that?
I, I think that, from the last time we had a discussion, when you summarized the entire discussion, she just summarized what our conclusion at the time was, was to, to momentarily wait, but the discussion clearly showed that there was a portion of the population in the RV and VR vacation rentals that would vote for the assessment. I mean, we'd all hope that we'd be on the same page. In addition, I think Maggie was the one that most clearly defined it, that the vote would most likely outvote them anyways. So, the, the assessment, the amount of people voting to be part of the assessment, they would be included in that. So, the point was mute, was how I felt the discussion went, that basically, once we all decide that we're going to do this, that it's going to happen even if people don't want it to happen. And I think that also the board, I felt wanted to have, see it happen, but I didn't, I felt like there wasn't anybody stepping forward who either had a hotel or a vacation rental or an RV park and said, yeah, let's do it. I mean, I certainly put my, I jumped out there and said, let's do this, but I'm not, I'm not an owner of a hotel or an RV park or VR.
I, I think you're going to find that the T-Bid Board is very, very supportive, and in fact, if I got, if I recall this, this actually needs to start with the T-Bid. The action, the activity to do this should come from the T-Bid. The, the discussion that we have with, with two members of the T-Bid Board, there was a gracious interest on the part of the board to entice the, the vacation rentals and the, and the RV parks to join. And as we discussed that, just our observation of the county TMD is, it's going to be really hard to entice them to join. If there was no enticement to be done for a 1% county TMD, it will be even more difficult for a 3% T-Bid. And based on that discussion, because when, when this first started, several of the board members had not participated, weren't here to participate in that discussion a year and a half ago, and to see some of the energy involved in that discussion. And so based on that and on our desire, myself, Jen and Akani, to get tourism management within the city working great through this year, and to get the T-Bid reassessed this year, and then to worry about this new opportunity or take on this new opportunity next year, it seemed to be a more deliberate process than to throw this into the mix right now. So, and what Taylor just said is exactly correct, bottom line is, if most of the hotels want them to join, they will be compelled to join as long as you agree. So the, that's just the way, the way the numbers are.
Okay, thanks, let's, let's move on, thanks. Thank you. Okay. Okay, next one?
That was it.
That was it?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other, so let's, any feedback from council on these?
I'd like to see metrics and action plan. Thank you.
Marlis? Matt? Red? Okay. All right. Great. Thank you. Thanks very much. Thanks, thanks to the board. Thanks, Taylor, thanks for coming out. And then our citizen finance committee board, Barbara and Craig, thank you. There you go.
Maybe I need the training on these as well, a little bit, the media training.
Green light.
There we go. So CFAC held their regular January meeting, and at that meeting, they reviewed the current year work plan they had and started to look at potential work plan items to include for next year's proposed budget, or work plan for city council to, to review and potentially bless. After city council went forward and made some adjustments and started to tweak the goals and objectives, the citywide goals and objectives for next year, had another meeting with CFAC to do something similar in light of the new potential goals and objectives. So that's how the draft work plan for CFAC was partially formulated for next year. So, all four of CFAC's draft goals on their work plan on here tie directly to council goal number one, titled Achieve Economic and Fiscal Sustainability. Pretty easy fit with that one. So, the first goal, Goal A, is kind of in CFAC's charter, they're required to go and look at measure Q expenditures and revenues, so we thought we'd put that right up front. That's something they'll have to do by December 31st of next year for the current fiscal year 1617. Second one is budget transparency, and that is a continuation of a current year work plan goal, and CFAC actually did a great job at producing that public-friendly document that we have posted on our website currently.
Thank you.
Have gotten some good feedback on that, instead of, you know, 170 pages of texts and not very much by way of having the average person that, that wants to take a look at our budget have a, an understanding of that. So, what Barbara and the rest of the CFAC members did is put together a nice kind of three-page?
Yes.
Three-page budget transparency, yeah, for starters, tool. And the idea is to build on that, to look at some more kind of nuances of the budget, like transfers, for example, finding a better way to kind of highlight those and show those to the public and build those within our, hopefully, citywide budget. So that's the idea behind continuing that Goal 1B. And Goal C, we have CFAC review, and that includes a semi-annual review of budget performance, including the investment portfolio, portfolio performance and contract expenditures and prepare comments, if any, to present to city council. So that'd be a bi-annual task, go through, look at detailed transaction log, all the revenues and expenditures coming in at mid-year and end of the year, as well as providing any comments or findings as appropriate and preparing those to city council.
And I might just add that it may look like a small list, but that in itself is a huge undertaking, and I just wanted to point that out, I appreciate you having that on there, and, and just wanted to make it known that that task is ongoing and very comprehensive in terms of your evaluation. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you for that, it's certainly an enduring task. So Goal 1E actually should be titled D, I apologize for that. It's labeled General Fund Budget Reductions, and that's tied directly to the draft citywide Goal 1, Objective E, which reads, considering council direction to identify no less than $400,000 of cost reductions across FY 1920, the next two fiscal years, and develop a cost control and reduction plan to achieve those cuts. So this goal was framed around that draft citywide goal, and is specific to next fiscal year, so it'd be a $200,000 or more identified cut for next year's work plan, and asking that to be specifically delved into the general fund budget and within the finance department-related duties, which would be an applicable review for CFAC, or citywide type potential reductions such as labor cost. So, that's what we have.
Okay. Comments to my, to my left? Then?
Comment? Thank you very much, by the way, for the presentation. And might I just quickly add, would it be important or appropriate to add a review of audit recommendations and management response work plan? I don't want to burden the committee with a lot of stuff, but for accountability and action, as an action item, it might just fit here as one of those routine issues. And C?
Would you like me to comment on that?
You should.
Okay, sure. We have had that, and we have had the reviews. I'm hesitant to get into too much detail on that, John, because having gone through the review that, that the group did previously, it is a long, detailed, somewhat complicated report. And this last year, only two of our six CFAC members had even a year of serving on the committee, myself included. So with the newer members, and then thankfully, another new, very well-qualified member this evening, I'm not sure how much we can help on that. I think it's our members' responsibility to, for instance, review the city council meeting, and excellent review last week from the Poon Group on that, get a, you know, a little more familiar with it, and then maybe dive into some questions. So we can keep it on here, but I want to be realistic about what I think we can contribute to that.
Totally understood, and I should clarify, just meant the management letter, not the full audit, just the management letter where there are significant deficiencies and the follow-through, that's all. That's all.
So that would be the report on internal controls and the response to that?
So that there's an area for accountability, not, not the whole audit, the audit's there, it's, I don't think you even have to worry about that, but the follow-up for the annual plan, a work plan for correcting the management letter deficiencies was what I was referring to. Sorry, it wasn't clear.
Okay, so you would be looking for us to come up with a structured plan as to how to address those, or just more generally make a recommendation that we agree, from a citizen's perspective, those deficiencies are present and should be addressed?
And that they are being addressed.
And that they are, and review?
That's it.
Action plans from my staff?
Exactly.
Colleagues?
That's it.
Buddy here? Okay, perfect, we can handle that.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, I, I don't want to overburden this committee, especially since I was once on it, and I know what it feels like to be overburdened, so I'm just going to throw this out, and, and you can just say, no, that's not doable, but I would just like to possibly consider adding, adding something to the effect that when some significant, there's a significant impact of something that we're facing affecting city finances, that the citizens' finance committee would be willing to take a look at it and provide opinions, advice, recommendations. I can't anticipate what they are at this point, but just to make sure that you would consider that part of your responsibilities.
Actually, absolutely, and Craig will tell you that in my email to him, I said, let's keep this short so we have room to take on the ad hoc, things that may occur in the next, literally, 15 months that we cannot predict at this time. And that could be anything from, we've talked off and on about streets or?
Right.
Other specific reductions or et cetera. So absolutely.
Good, thank you.
Matt? Red? Mr. Beck, any?
Just want to confirm one thing, so the item was E is now D. That is focused on either cost reduction measures in the finance department and the finance realm, or cost reduction measures that are common to, across the entire city. But what we're not asking, and I'm not suggesting you do, I just want to confirm, we're not asking the finance, the CFAC to do is to evaluate, for example, cost reductions in the rec department or in police department or in other things. But those, the council will be weighing all of those things, you're asking them to look specifically in finance and in things that are common to all departments, such as cost of labor and those things.
That sounds good.
Yeah, that's the way I read it, but yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I just want to make a comment and compliment. Barbara, I just want to say thanks for your work and chairing the meeting. I know it -- in sticking to the agenda items and making sure we're on task, which is very helpful in setting these goals and objectives. And I know I talked earlier, and we all did talk about coming back with advisory board policies, roles, responsibilities, and we'll have an opportunity to discuss that, a handbook, perhaps. And I guess I'm bringing this up because as we talk about, whether it's Craig and the finance department, all of our departments have -- we have our goals that we're marching by, you know, day in and day out, which is great, and just being sensitive to the fact that, you know, how much work we're driving within the advisory board. So we are thoughtful about taking input from our advisory board members. We've had great discussions, Barbara, on this as well, and we're able to make sure that we are -- we stay on task with that, because, you know, Craig's going to have a -- he's got a big plate to fill there, and we don't want to get too distracted on where we're going with that. But, you know, we've talked about that as well. Just want to appreciate the way you chair the meetings and keeping us on point. And if, you know, if there's a direction that the board has interest in, then certainly, you know, that can come to council. We can consider that, but always being mindful of workload on our various department heads and overall in the city.
Thank you, Jamie, because I know I'm struggling, and some of our members are because of the newness and trying to, you know, get familiar with the city's finance system, how to read those reports, and without getting into too much detail. But we're also, now that we are fully staffed, I'm going to be asking for volunteers or perhaps even assigning volunteers to some subcommittees to try to get a little more work, and I'm going to be asking them to get familiar and do some of their own research with some of these concepts as opposed to asking staff for presentations. I want to be very sensitive, especially the finance group, I believe. I concur with the recommendations of the PUN group being slightly understaffed for the work that has to be done. So if we continually ask for reports in different formats, or summary, or presentations, that's more hours of other, maybe higher priority work, in my opinion, that's not going to get done. So we're trying to balance that. We are sensitive to that, so.
And we've got to be able to say, "Hey, right now, can't do that right now."
Exactly.
Or, you know, if we want to reprioritize that, we could take that to council and think about that, but we've got to be mindful of those priorities. Yep. Thanks. Any other comments from council? Okay. Great, I think we got it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you, all.
Looking pretty good. And our Rec and Park Commission, thanks, you guys.
Doesn't that sound like a TV show, "Park and Rec"? Something like that? It'd be a good name for one.
Welcome, you guys. Drew, thank you. Kirk, thank you.
Thank you.
Fire away, please.
Recreation Services Coordinator, Drew Cigars.
Microphone? Next one down. There you go. Thank you.
Should I repeat?
There you go.
I did a Craig. Okay, starting off with our budget forecast, item number one, actually, all of our items fell under what we felt Goal Number One, the city's Goal Number One, "Achieve Economic and Fiscal Sustainability." So we put out our budget forecast, reviewing our budget forecast for Recreation Services Division with the Rec and Parks Commission for their information, and we'll be putting that on our May agenda, actually, so not this month, but next month.
Okay. Just keep rolling, and as we --
Just keep on rolling.
We'll stop, and if we've got some interjections, thanks.
Also, evaluating programs. We will review existing recreational programming with the RPC, including our sports classes, youth offerings, as well as our special events. We are looking at partnering with tourism for some of our events as well, so that was neglected to insert that in here, but -- and then also looking for suggestions on potential other offerings, and we'll be taking a look at this quarter one and quarter two. Once we receive those suggestions, then the staff will go ahead and begin to review and research, analyze, et cetera, and then hopefully determine some potential partnerships, and then report back to our Rec and Parks Commission. And then, should there be the feasible partnerships or contracting opportunities, we'll prepare the relevant budget documents for the commission's review and seek recommendations to adjust mid-year budget or for the following fiscal year consideration. Food trucks is our next item, and we are looking to research and bring to council considerations to change our municipal code to allow food trucks specifically during approved events. We feel that this modification to the municipal code could help generate additional revenue for the city or department.
I have a question on that. I didn't really think, as this was bringing up here, perhaps coordinate with the planning commission with this, so it might be something. And Harper as well. Yes. Yep. Yep.
Thank you. And then move along to the community pool planning. Prepare for and enact an overall management of the community access to the new Morro Bay High School slash community pool, and bring a report to the commission in quarters one or two of 2017. The pool is on schedule to open September of '17, so we are in the process right now of reaching out to local swimmers, putting together kind of a little advisory group, looking to survey the community as well to better understand the needs before we do move forward with any concrete planning. I have met with the high school to discuss anyway, so what their plans are, and then how we can go ahead and fit our community members into the pool.
I do have a question for you. In terms of meeting with the school board and the high school, is that something you're doing periodically, knowing that this is starting to ramp up and they're getting ready to establish their own programs? I would -- the reason I bring that up is knowing how interested the community is, Morro Bay is, and Los Osos and Cayugas, to be on the forefront of that, to let this -- so I don't know what's your ideas about meeting with the school board, or not the school board, but the high school regularly?
Yes, we've been meeting about every other month, just following or tracking the progress of the construction, but as well as discussing their programming. And unfortunately, I can't get concrete answers right now until they set the -- there's fall schedule for the high school students, and of course, our community needs are going to be based around whatever is available or left to us, so -- but yes, I am meeting with them.
Okay, and then plus, in understanding that their fall schedule will be changing in '18, in terms of the use of the pool, they're considering they're going to have a dual water polo event, girls and boys, starting in the fall, and that's why I bring it up in terms of, I know you're being proactive, but knowing, looking at this, because that's going to really change the way the community members could use the pools.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see. Moving to pickleball court space, it should have been really court space, so pardon me for that, but we would like to research and present to council additional future court space, and this would be a bocce ball or pickleball as well. So we are in the process now of researching, and then we'll present, staff will present to RPC for consideration and recommendation, and bring our recommendations to council. And then our recreation guide, we are sponsoring, not publishing, the Morro Bay Recreation Programs Guide in the fall and spring. You should have seen the copy already, but we are planning on the next edition to come out in August of '17, and we will be discussing that with the RPC in our upcoming meetings.
I know with last year's RPC guide, there was a lot of ad space sold to publish it. Are we, are you considering and reaching out to do that same sort of cost covering for the publication of that?
Absolutely.
Can that be for both editions?
For the -- yes, for the activities guide?
Yes.
Yes. It won't be produced without that.
Got it.
One question?
Yeah.
So I saw that on our agenda tonight, that basically your fees are basically going to only be tied to CPI increase this year, and I appreciate that. One of the concerns I continue to hear from the community is affordability for youth, especially challenged youth or underprivileged youth. So my question is, are you working with the Astero Foundation to -- how do you guys work together, and/or are there other methods you might use to assist kids in offsetting some of the costs, being sensitive to the need for full cost recovery for the city? Just wondered what you thought.
Yes, we are currently working with the foundation board, just wrapped up our annual spaghetti feed fundraiser, and the proceeds do go back to the foundation, which do in turn then come back to us in scholarships for the underprivileged youth. Outside of that, we don't, I don't have plans at this time for anything to expand beyond that. Let me back up, though. We have looked at offering discounts for a second child if they're participating in the same program, so that is something that we have entertained in the past and are still looking at that, but nothing formal at this time.
And John, it's pretty, it's a pretty close relationship. People come to the front at recreation, and if they ask for assistance, there's a sheet that comes out, and if you get free or reduced lunch, you're, and you're able to show it, then you can get on the list. So, and that's really it. So anytime somebody has that, they're on that, they can get on that list, and they can get a reduction.
I am familiar with the program where a business will sponsor a child or family, and I would just consider that as another outreach opportunity. I know our businesses get hammered, but I just hate to see kids go unserved and not have their needs met when they actively want to get involved in sports, and I know it's difficult for the city to subsidize that, and we can't do it, but I think there are opportunities beyond the Astero Foundation to partner, and one might be with local business sponsorships.
Thank you. And just as a note, about $42,000 was gifted to, through scholarships from the foundation last fiscal year.
Kirk, how do we do at the fundraiser?
I'm sorry?
The spaghetti feed. Do you know how much we did at the Dixon Feed?
Little over, about $3,500.
Thirty-five. That's not bad.
And Kirk, do you know how many kids got scholarships last year, just out of curiosity?
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry.
Just in approximate? No?
I don't have those figures. I'm sorry.
Just curious.
Hundreds.
Hundreds.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
No, that's --
I just --
Go ahead.
I would just observe, in this last issue that we've talked about, that there is lots of space or opportunity for leadership, not city staff leadership necessarily, but for community leadership, and there's a growing need for it. So minimum wage is going to increase another 35%, 40% over the next three or four years. All of our programs are essentially directly related to minimum wage, because our coaches and our referee, not coaches, our referees and --
Scorekeepers.
Scorekeepers, folks that make the program run are all minimum wage-based, and we have a council policy that directs what the cost recovery needs to be for those programs, but that cost recovery is based on the cost of providing that program, so as the cost of providing the program goes up, based on minimum wage going up, the cost of the ticket, so to speak, is going to have to go up also. Either that, or we're going to need to change our cost recovery and take more general fund money to subsidize the programs, or -- and the city, the staff can do some things. For example, last year for basketball, we had businesses sponsor basketball teams, and they paid for the T-shirt and a basketball, and that was a great thing. But lots of space for community groups, or Astero Bay Foundation, or others to look at, provide leadership in this area of generating more money for scholarships and to, more money to subsidize the cost of providing programs.
Any other comments? Drew, I just want to hear from you and just say thanks. You know, I know the guys do a lot of work, so I just appreciate it. You have any comments for us?
No, I believe the programs have been going well. I also am very concerned that the disadvantaged youth do have the advantage, and, you know, I think we're looking forward to trying to bring some more events to town, low-impact stuff, you know, marathons and the sort of things like that. But no, it's a fabulous place to live, and I'm glad I'm able to make a small contribution to the community. Thank you for letting me serve.
Thanks, Drew. I do have a couple of comments as well, as far as thoughts on what we have. So we did talk about at previous advisory boards, Public Works Advisory Board specifically about the capital improvement. So our PWAAB is going to look at our capital improvement budget and program, and the thought was coordinating that those with the park facilities and having the Rec and Park Board review that as well, so wanted to be able to coordinate that. And then the other is, we have pickleball court, research and present to council opportunities for additional future pickleball court. We did have a discussion on a skateboard park, and that's kind of fallen off the wayside, but I didn't want to forget that and wanted to be able to keep that going. You know, it seemed like we had it once and years ago, and we had some young gentlemen come in and approach us, and I just want to be able to make sure that that's on the list, and we continue researching what opportunities we might have there. Okay? Is there any other comments to that? Okay? Okay?
Also task you with metrics and action plan. I've said it to every group so far, so you have to hear that. Sorry.
All right. With that, unless there's any further comments, just, you know, thanks to the board. Drew, thank you. Kirk, thanks, and we can conclude our advisory board work plans, and I just want to just check in. We're all good here? Thank you, guys. So we'll go ahead and adjourn our special meeting. We have a few minutes to take a break before our city council meeting. Thanks.